Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Whitehall City Council meeting of September 21st, 2021. If we'd all please rise for a moment of silence, all but a pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Odd, would you please call roll?
Bailey?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
Connison?
Present.
Kanter?
Present.
Teck? Morrison?
Present.
President Potter?
Present.
Mr. President, move to excuse the absent member.
Second. There's been a motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, to excuse the absent member. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. At this time, we've got the approval of the minutes of the September 7th, 2021 Agenda of Regular Meeting Minutes, and the September 14th, 2021 Emergency Special Meeting Agenda and Meeting Minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. There has been a motion by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Kanter, for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. This now raises for our first poll public of the evening. We'll invite members to come forward and please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Me?
You're so inclined, right? Please.
Okay. Dan Sizemore, live at 983 Demsden Drive East. I have a couple photos here that I don't know if you can get into here.
The Clark.
What was her first name?
Dan.
Dan?
Yeah. Okay, give me a second here, find my map. Okay, I want to start off by saying that as a resident, I appreciate the work being done to make this a better-looking city. The work being done at Fairport and Wood Cliff especially are doing, going a long way in doing that. But we have a recurring problem in the neighborhood where I live, and that's graffiti on that apartment wall. This happens every few years, and it gets cleaned only when it happens again. Saturday morning, I stepped outside and somebody sprayed paint at it overnight. My wife and I have been residents since 1984 and homeowners since 1989. We like sitting in the front porch. We like visiting with the people that walk by. We like looking at our flowers, our bird feeders and stuff like that out front. You can't enjoy it when you're looking at graffiti all over the wall. It seems to me there's a fairly easy way to fix this, and some of the wall already has it done on it. And that's some sort of shrubbery, ivy, or something along the wall that would cover it so that they couldn't paint it. You know, I mean, I know everything costs money, but if we want to be a fine city, then, you know, this, this would go a long ways into doing that, too. Let's not forget about the people that live over here in the country-club area. So that was really it. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Sizemore. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward for poll public? Hearing nothing, I'll move over to our standing committee reports. Administration, Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have a couple of items to introduce tonight, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Elder Advocacy did meet on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no pending legislation, and we will meet again 6:30 next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met. Community Change and Enforcement also met last Tuesday. Minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Mr. Bailey's going to take over for Chairperson Teck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Structure Maintenance and Services did meet last Tuesday. We also have a couple of items to be introduced tonight. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Connison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week, and our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime around 6:30.
Very good. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Kanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week in the back or up here after 6:30.
Thank you. Officials Reports, Mayor Kim May.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm sorry if you can't hear me very well because of the mask, but I would just like to ask for favorable consideration of 80 and 81 on first reading, if it so pleases counsel. And I would also like to request 84 and 85 on first reading as well. Thank you.
City Attorney, Michael Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you everyone for coming out this evening from the City Attorney's Office. Before I get into what happened today in Mayor's Court, I would like to go on the record just to congratulate the Langport Homeowners Association that just celebrated again with its celebration around the pond. The individual that leads that organization, his name is Jason Thomas, and it's appropriate to recognize him publicly at this point because he is a bona fide true American hero that lives right in the city of Whitehall. If you don't know Sergeant Thomas, he is a former, excuse me, I apologize, he is a United States Marine.
Never.
I know, never former Marine that served during the 9/11 tragedy that occurred in 2001. He took it upon himself to go to the ground zero without any prodding, without any care of his own safety, having children at home, and got in there and served. Served not only the people that needed him, but served our country, served himself, served as God, and made the Marine Corps proud. And I am just honored to know him. I'm honored to know that he is serving right now in the city of Whitehall as the president of the Langport Homeowners Association. And I just wanted to congratulate that Homeowners Association, as well as Jason Thomas, just for his continued service to our city and just for just being an all-around great guy. And I just want to say on the record, sympathize delus to my Marine Corps brother. He serves, and he continues to serve without any impunity, and I just am so thankful to have him here. Next, within the City Attorney's Office, something happened today that I was going to call the chief because I have his number, but I thought it would be more appropriate to make this recognition on the record tonight, and then I'll call Chief Crispin tomorrow. But there was a different spirit today in our Mayor's Court. People were very angry. They were disheveled. They were, there was probably more belligerence that I've witnessed from the individuals in our court than I've seen in my past years of being City Attorney. But one thing that I saw, which was just commendable, I saw Officer Jeremy Brown handle, at least on three occasions, being treated with disrespect, being talked to with, in a degrading tone, being almost, from one individual, almost goading him into some type of confrontation. But Officer Brown demonstrated the utmost professionalism. He demonstrated poise. He demonstrated class. He demonstrated what we are about in Whitehall. And I was so proud to sit there and watch him do that because, as you know, we serve, and we serve because we love to serve. Officers serve in a completely different way, and I say this often. I don't know if I could serve in that capacity, but the fact that I was able to witness a man serve in that capacity with doing nothing at all but trying to service our Mayor's Court and call cases, to be treated with that type of disrespect, but not respond, and respond with a spirit of service, warns my heart that he is a part of our police force. It warns my heart that he is a part of our team, and it makes me proud as just not only a citizen of Whitehall, but as the City Attorney that serves in our Mayor's Court, to have an individual like that that's here and is able to de-escalate a situation of no cause of his own. And so I just wanted to make a commendation to him publicly. I will make the phone call to Chief Crispin tomorrow to let him know that I did this publicly on the record, but I wanted to do this publicly because I know that this is transcribed and this is out for the public. And also, he was here training another officer by the name of Matt Perez, and we had Art, Officer Art, out at the door. And so it was just, it was a very different time, but all three officers, they handled it with grace, with integrity, and with service, and I just am so proud to have witnessed that. And I just wanted to make that declaration on the record this evening for members of council and for the public to hear.
Thank you very much. That's very nice to hear. Director of Development and Public Service, Wood.
Thanks, Mr. President. I always really enjoy following City Attorney. Somehow he makes me look like a Buddhist monk. I don't have any official report this evening. I do want to introduce our City Council and Administration. I know the Administration's already met her, but introduce Kelsey Miller, stand-up girl. This is Kelsey. Kelsey is our new Economic Development Manager. She started last Monday, and certainly asked her to be here this evening so that we could, you guys could all have an opportunity to meet her. She'll be here after council if anybody has any questions. So just wanted to welcome, formally welcome Kelsey to the team.
Thank you.
As we are to you. Director of Public Service, Ben Regan, is not with us this evening? Oh, I did. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller. That was not intentional.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report other than what you have before you, which is also available for the public on our website under the auditor's page. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, our Director of Public Service, or Public Safety, is not with us this evening. Our Treasurer, Mr. Quinzel, is not with us this evening. The following official reports have been filed into Council Office since the last meeting. That would include the Auditor's Expense Report for August 2021, the Auditor's Bank Report for August 2021, the Auditor's Statement of Cast Possession Report for August 2021, the Auditor's Revenue Report for August 2021, the Treasurer's Investment Report for August 2021, the Treasurer's Activity Fund Report for August 2021, and finally, the Treasurer's Fund of Reconciliation Report for August 2021. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, there have been nothing filed in the Council Office since our last meeting. Ms. Odd, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any additional add-on legislation.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Now on to our legislation. Third reading, we have got nothing listed for this evening, which will move us to our second reading. We have got ordinance 76, 2021, authorizing a mayor to enter into contract with a public net use pool of Ohio, PEP, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, would you introduce ordinance 76, 2021, and move for the suspension of all rules?
Second.
Mr. Morrison with a second from Ms. Connison has introduced ordinance 76, 2021, and requests to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 76, 2021, has been adopted.
President Potter, can I say something about the contract with the PEP pool?
Please.
I had met with our insurance agent this morning, and I know that they really worked hard. We were anticipating possibly a 15% increase in our liability insurance, but however, they really whittled it down and basically 6.5% increase, and that even is when we had a lot of our property value increase. So that means we have to have more insurance to cover that. So that is even with the property increases. And so I'd like to say that I know that it was a hard contract, but we really whittled it down. Also, we're waiting to hear back on the cyber liability. We do expect that to go up quite enough, I mean, quite.
Substantially?
Yes, thank you. Last year, it wasn't that much. It was, you know, I can say this considering, I'm comparing it to liability insurance, but it was $9,000. But I was told, you know, it could go up as much as 100%, which, you know, doubles. Yeah. It's just the way it is with ransomware and all this that's going on and cyber attacks and everything. But I assured our agent, and he will get back with the cyber companies that we're going out to bid for, is that we also have an off-site storage for all of our systems, and some of those are backed up five to six times a day. So he's very happy to hear that. But I just wanted the public to know that we're working diligently to make sure that all of our data is safe and secure. So thank you.
Appreciate that information. Ordinance 78, 2021, authorizing approving the amendment of 161.13, special leave with pay, and approving section 161.13D, paid parental leave, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 78, 2021, move for the suspension of rules.
Second.
Ordinance 78, 2021, has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Connison, with request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, seconded, introduced by her, introduced by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 78, 2021, has been adopted. Resolution 2021 will be read by title only, approving the recommendations of the City of Whitehall Tax Assembly Review Council for tax year 2020. Resolution 23, 2021, agreeing to an adjustment to the city's boundaries by consenting to a transfer of approximately 3.34 plus or minus acres from the city of Columbus to the city of Whitehall.
Mr. President, wish to introduce resolution 23, 2021, ask for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Resolution 23, 2021, has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Elmore, with request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 23, 2021, has been adopted. Now brings us to our first readings. First one will be by title only. 80, 2021, amending section 509.01 with a codified order titled "Mayor May Proclaim Regulations and Declaring an Emergency." Also read, being read by title only, this ordinance 81, 2021, amending section 509.03 with a codified order titled "Proclamation, Termination, and Declaring an Emergency." Ordinance 82, 2021, will be read by title only, making a fund transfer in the amount of $283,084 to the bond retirement account 101-950-57,500, the debt service fund 401. Ordinance 83, 2021, will be read by title only, making a fund transfer in the amount of $46,241.64 to the bond retirement account 101-950-57,500, to the debt service fund 401, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 84, 2021, also will be read by title only, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $149,426.25 from various accounts in the wind petty fund 279, to the debt service fund 401. That brings us to ordinance 85, 2021, authorizing approving the amendment of 161.37A and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 85, 2021, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore, has introduced ordinance 85, 2021, requesting the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 85, 2021, has been adopted. Ordinance 86, 2021, authorizing approving the following change to 161.38 and 161.41 salary schedule and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 86, 2021, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore, has introduced ordinance 86, 2021, with request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 87, 2021, repealing ordinance 46.
No, no, Chris, we're still on 86. We just suspended the rules on 86.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Sorry about that. Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Happens to me all the time. A motion to adopt 86, 2021, by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Sure.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 86, 2021, has been adopted. Resolution 25, 2021, accepting amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution 25, 2021, and move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey with a second from Ms. Connison has introduced resolution 25, 2021, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 25, 2021, has been adopted. Resolution 26, 2021, resolving to approve the benefit house certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution 26, 2021, move for suspension of rules.
Second. Mr. Bailey with a second from Mr. Rodriguez has introduced ordinance 26, 2021, with request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 26, 2021, has been adopted. That now brings us to ordinance 87, 2021, repealing ordinance 46, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, now I would like to introduce ordinance 87, 2021, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. Mr. Rodriguez with a second from Mr. Kanter has introduced ordinance 87, 2021, and requested the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. We are directing the developer to start over on this project by holding productive meetings with the neighbors and neighborhood to work towards a consensus and compromise, and come back to this body with a better project for all parties.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Any additional discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 87, 2021, has been approved. Our final piece of legislation this evening is Resolution 27, 2021, which is withdrawing the submission of the question of approving ordinance number 46, 2021, to the electors at the November 2nd, 2021 general election due to City Council's repeal of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution 27, 2021, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Mr. Rodriguez has introduced resolution 27, 2021, seconded by Mr. Morrison with request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 27, 2021, has been adopted. This now brings us to our second poll public of the evening. And should anybody wish to come forward again, please state your name, address, and keep your comments for three minutes. Hearing nobody, I will now move on to Community Day Board. Yes, I'm looking at you, Karen.
I know. I've got nothing.
That's not like you.
I know.
Anybody else have anything? Well, does anybody have anything for Community Day Board? Very good. We'll now move to poll council. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for coming. Folks at home listening in. Mike, I appreciate your, the things you share with us almost every meeting. It's phenomenal. And to back up what you said about our safety forces, even our EMS, our crew, firemen, and all those folks over here that take care of the city do a phenomenal job. And it's nice when, you know, we can recognize them in an environment like your courts today, and they handle it not only with professionalism, but they care. They're good people. Kelsey, it's nice to meet you. Dan, surely something can be done. And I'm sure you'll be contacted. And Jim, it's good to see you in this room again. And last, Mr. President, I'd like to wish Mr. Rodriguez a happy birthday.
Plus three, or four.
Thank you. Mr. Birthday, or Mr. Rodriguez, if you have anything.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see everyone out here in TV land. Lori had such wonderful words for her birthday. Lori had such wonderful words for her birthday. I was really trying to come up with something to one-up her, but I just couldn't. However, I did run across some words by, in one of Sean Dietrich's articles, and basically, you know, I've had a little bit of rough last year, but so has everyone else. I mean, we've all been in this together, and, you know, everyone at this table, everyone in this room has had some trials and tribulations this past year. So, I read this and I thought, you know what, this really sums it up. It says, "Your good moments were like swatches of fabric. Your painful moments were like little pinpricks from a sewing needle, stitching you together like a quilt. And on your final day, you'll see this quilt and think to yourself, 'My God, wasn't I beautiful?'" Thank you, Mr. President.
Nice.
That's very nice.
Miss Elmore?
Well, you just did it.
But they weren't my words.
You spoke those words, and I could feel your spirit when you said it.
Thank you.
And happy birthday to you, because you're very special. I'd like to thank everybody that has attended this meeting, those that are viewing from Facebook, social media, and also the guests that we have in the audience. A welcome aboard, Kelsey. You'll love working for Whitehall. I believe that we're top-notch administration. And also, I want to thank Mr. Sizemore for bringing to awareness the issues that are happening and your concern, and I'm sure that we can work together to make sure that we rectify that issue and take some of the things that you talked about under consideration. So I thank you for taking the opportunity to bring your concern to us. Also, I'd like to just have a minute and talk about, first of all, Jason Thomas, 911 hero in Whitehall. Thank you for bringing that forward. Langford has a cookout gathering with that community every year, and it's very, very nice that everybody comes together. And it's not just one or two people, it's the whole area comes together and they do this big picnic, and I was not fortunate enough to be there this year because I had a family reunion. So I sent my information to Jason, and I'm so sorry I missed it, but they do a phenomenal job. He also is very instrumental in that residence, they have a, wow, I can't think of the...
What association?
No, they have the, oh, Lord, help me, see. Neighborhood watch, there we go. Neighborhood watch, and I have participated in their neighborhood watch. But I just like that they are a very close-knit community, and I'm happy that they continue to build upon the relationships that they have with each other. And also, I want to talk about how the officer, Officer Jeremy Brown, demonstrated and handled that situation. It reminds me of what we learned when we were in our cohort of governing essentials for local leaders, and it's verbal judo. And not only did we learn that in our class, but also I do some part-time work with the SHOT, and they used Whitehall as an example of verbal judo because we use that when we have to de-escalate situations. And that was a proud moment to take that training and to see that Whitehall was used as one of, as one of the training modules to talk about how to de-escalate situations. So I'm glad, that's not just something that you're taught and you don't do, but it is practice, and so I'm glad to witness that, and it kind of just jarred my memory.